I'd like to follow this committee of the whole meeting's order, May the first, two thousand and twenty-three, seven oh two P M. On Zoom today, we have Council on Mark and we will be joined very shortly by Deputy Mayor Donald. I'd like to recognize that we're in the traditional land of the three five territory, Nitrusways at Cree Nation, and that we are the homeland of the Maquis and that we are all pretty cute. Next, can I have an approval of the agenda? Counselor Fitzpatrick, Counselor Culver, all in favor? Next, we go to community comments and feedback. Community comments and feedback. Second time, any community comments or feedback? Third and final time, community comments or feedback. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports. Five point one is development report. We're going to. Mr. Spurges.
Good evening, everyone. My report is attached, just to highlight for tonight, for tonight. So our I C N projects are moving forward. We are currently in discussion with both the road and the water project contractors. We will put commitment to start it by the end of May after long weekend. Somebody can be here sooner. We are having a road meeting tomorrow to get that scheduled. So they could be here either the week before May long weekend or after the long weekend to get started. So we're looking forward to getting all that work done. The road renewal contract with Maple Leaf, the signed contract is returned back to Maple Leaf today, so that's all in order. As you'll see, I've got the total invoice today for both projects. So road renewal project invoice today is two hundred and twelve thousand. Really, that encompasses just the engineering and design work, all the work we've done so far. We have not had construction work that will start this year. The road, sorry, the water wastewater renewal, a total invoice today is six point, let's call it six point five million dollars for the routing. And that was all the work that was completed last year by the contractors, by the designer, which was StatTech, and all of the other costs by Manitowoc Water Service. Both of these totals have been already submitted to Manitowoc for payment, and we've received the federal and provincial portions of the road costs back, and we're just waiting for the federal part of the bottoming portion to come back. That will come back and turn into two our accounts. Asset management software, we are working for on the I T roadmap with regards to this one. There's been a lot of bumps in the road on this. We need to try and get the I T portions of it figured out, but I believe we should have that fairly completed in the next, for the next short while. It's really come down to the decisions whether or not we're hosting the programs locally on our servers or having it hosted by the provider on theirs. We really wanted it hosted. We know that cloud is going to require because of the mobile assets to get to the down road, the ability for our operators to connect to the, to the program from a field with a tablet and phone, which is the matter of the location. From a facilities perspective, lots of work on the go. The arena is converting to summer schedule, so the ice is not at the T R N O C A. And the board of the ice, the plant's shut down yesterday, moved tomorrow by Wednesday. We're looking forward to our summer season. We've completed new lighting, the L E D lighting upgrade downstairs in the main lobby area of City Hall. So we're reviewing that and looking at conversion of lighting in other areas, trying to take into account incentives and graphs to assist with this work. We've worked through R F Ps on the works, which is the Republic, we have ten ring program for geotechnical assessments, one for City Hall and the second one for the Gordon Beard Arena. This stuff is already pre-approved, it's part of our capital plan. When I wrote this report submitted, both were to close on the eighth. We've actually extended it now to May fifteenth based on questions from some of the contractors. And with regard to public safety, building the cell painting, again, this was a message written last week. Legal counsel has finalized the deviation agreement and expected to find out to the contractor. So this is one of the work from the cell painting and public safety, where there were some issues with peeling and chipping and problems and concerns not long after that work was done. The contract was issued in two thousand and twenty with COVID and everything else. We were spinning around to finding that, that direction with them. For a development perspective, as I've reported in the past months, we have five options. Unfortunately, four of those options have been blocked by the, by the opponents for a number of reasons. We have one left that was renewed at a meeting at the end of March, if you recall, for a property at ninety-nine Jennifer. So that right now is the only option we have forward. Because I did report to you in March, giving you the March and April stats for permits for building perspective, our buildings, department inspection department was very busy the last little while with both the number of permits and the size of the permit applications. We had modifications, renovations in our parker, courthouse, the airport, and a bunch of other smaller building permits, some of them as a result of the Department of Plaza Fire, some of them as a result of, of work going on. So it's been a very, very busy time. As you look at comparison, we've issued fifteen permits to date for the total construction value of twenty-one, almost twenty-two million. Whereas last year, this time, we had ten permits issued with a construction value of four and a half million. So again, more permits and bigger projects. So it's been very busy. I did put in my report, I will add, the cloud permit system has made it a lot easier for everybody. We are now able to do everything online. So we're now waiting for drawings to get shipped back at work, everything's sent in electronic through the board there. All messaging and correspondence is led through the program. So it's all time tag, time stamp and everything. So it's been a a great improvement for the building process since we can put up to that system on January first.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for the report?
Counselor Culver. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just curious if we have any indication why we have so many people sort of, I guess, withdrawing from their development permits?
As I said, it's, it's a multitude of reasons. I was kind of trying to distill it down to the, the biggest one has been the increase in interest rates and increased cost of construction. I just boiled down with those two issues. Trying to get locals to cover projects. With, how many, was there four or five hikes provided over the last year event? That's turned projects from being at head on and viable to being on pipeline. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for your report. Move on to recreation report.
On here. Got the report for March and April. I'm also putting in some upcoming events that are taking place in names, so hopefully you can share them. And people might want to, they come out and enjoy them. So for March, we've had quite a few events that took place that, that here as you see, we have fitness council is there. We also had two events for March break, the Thompson Library Corporation sponsored a March break event, which was our, over the, where we put it, we put it into the multi conference room. So we had six televisions set up with X OXs and game cubes, these game cubes, and we had over six hundred people that took place. And it was just on average, I think it was about six hours each day for three days and a little bit on the twenty ninth. They also had a movie night in the G V, sorry, not the G V, in the gym. So that was a well attended event. We also had a paint night. We had fifteen people, which was the max to a class. That was sold out. We also, the city held our jump and sprint event, and it was a pre-event for the community. It was, we were able to put the event on through the grant that received from Canadian Heritage. We estimated around a thousand people did attend. Council members came out, some of them kicked off the event with serving hot dogs. We had game marabou, we had arcade games set up. We had bouncy houses, we served pizza for supper, and we had movies. So we had the best fireworks that we've had, to have the biggest budget, I guess, that we had for fireworks. So we had a lot of good feedback from that event. We did have some drum making workshops as well. And the two events, the event coordinator and the facility coordinator and myself attended the recognition conference in Winnipeg. And it was the first time actually that they've attended. One, first time that they attended, first time in ten years, the other one had attended. So they're very pleased to be able to have the opportunity to go. In April, again, we're doing a lot of workshops and different things. So we again had a two paint nights. We had a first aid pet class, which actually was so successful, we're going to be doing another one next month. We also had the ballet. Over two hundred people attended the ballet at the Leighton Theater. And then we completed a little mini update in our fitness area, and I've attached some photographs, some I guess inspirational quotes or whatnot. We painted the one wall and put some, some different. Those were actually inspired by one of our employees that frequently visits the gym. So those are actually quotes that he picked out. So that was nice to be able to get the staff involved, to be able to have their opinions on kind of what they want and still they smoke like. Whatever. So that was our April. We've got lots of stuff going on in April. So remove the ice, the ice in the C A is now removed, and they're working on taking out the ice with the G V. The C A was actually rented, or the G V was rented forever until yesterday, yeah, yesterday. So everybody was trying to get everything they could of the ice. So the G V should be out, I think, by tomorrow or Wednesday. And then we also held some meetings with the software organizations. We're trying to do the same thing that we're doing with the ice users to meet with them at the beginning of the season, again, at the end of the season, see if there's anything that we can all work on together to make the event successful. We are attending the National Digitalized People Meeting this week, or every two weeks, I believe. We did receive a twelve thousand grand fellow grant from the Canadian Heritage for Kennedy events. That is a yearly grant that we do receive. And we did, we are having our meetings. Our meetings have already started. We do have, we had quite a few attend there, one thirty. We only had one person come to our five o'clock meeting. And then that person only came because they said that they couldn't come during on a Thursday. So we just switched our meetings to Wednesdays. So if the general public wants to come out and volunteer or take, they can contact our lead and we can give them any information that they need. So we're going to go back to Jekyll one meeting for everybody to attend. We also received a grant from the Manitowoc Arts Council, the nine thousand dollar grant, just a couple of dollars less than what we received last year. That grant is actually given to, we were acting at the Arts Council. So that's why we're receiving this grant every year. Now that we do actually have an arts council that's established in Houston, and that I think they've been established for a couple of years now, they can apply for that grant. So we may, we may not be eligible for that grant for next year. So that grant would cover events such as the ballet and the theater. So if Thompson doesn't get that grant, or City of Thompson doesn't get that grant, the city would have the finances right now, would have current budget, those events. And then we also received a, a three-year gift agreement from ballet for the next three years. They'll be, I think it's thirty thousand dollars in total, so ten thousand dollars each year for the next three years. That is something that, this is exactly how we've had that grant, or gift grant from them. And upcoming events, we are hopefully going to be planting flowers as soon as they, they come up to the stores. We're going to start collecting our flowers and hopefully put them up at the intersections, hoping to do things a little bit differently this year. We'll see. I've got some plans, but we'll see if, if they come to fruition. We've got a youth course that's taking place. There's a Rockland sign workshop that's taking place right before Mother's Day. So hopefully we'll get that one hooked up. We've got our community plan out, so we're going to be working with Public Works, with the rec team, our, who probably works with that event. And we're going to be doing that May twenty-third to June sixteen. The C H T M trade show is coming up this weekend. We've got the Knights of Clones is coming up. Festival of the Arts, and we're going to be opening up the game room in the coming weeks.
New question, Councilor Holt.
Mayor, just to touch on the development agreement, a ten thousand each year, what do we use the money for?
It's.
The department can use the money for.
It's used for any arts and culture events as well as candidate. So it's meant to identify any way we're going to use it for candidate or arts culture.
So there is a specific way to use it.
Oh, for, for, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to ask what recreation convention is. It's a conference that happens every year. All of the different municipalities attend. A big conference for recreation, I guess. Can I go? Network with different municipalities and just possibly the worst kind of. It's good network. Anyone else?
Councilor Wal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last question for the, I seen you say opening the game room. Are you going to move the paper tennis into the game room again, or is it going to be leave it outside?
I actually thought another one for there, and we're leaving custom lobby.
Just our, if you proact.
I know.
People come up and you, thank you.
I guess I should add, we did put the tender over the, I didn't put that in my report, but the tender did go over to the pool on the twentieth of April. It closes on the eleventh of February. We know there's possibly going to be an extension to that, but we had some requests been to the deadline. The deadline. Thank you.
Thanks for your report. The, that's five point three, the Thompson Library Report. Okay?
Yeah, this is just the record, first quarterly report from the Thompson Public Library. All the information is there. If the council has any questions, I can bring them back to the library to be answered.
Is there any questions on the library report? Okay, seeing none at this time, we'll move on. We're going to go into number six, development. Six point one is a memo from the Director of Development, Department of Services, in regards to land transfer for lots. Eight and nine block two, Plan three, four, nine, three, two, thirty-two and thirty-six, Hamley Road. Wow?
Yeah, good evening. So just for the memo, back in two thousand and twenty-twelve, council passed a resolution to a development and last year agreement that we had created for nine lots on Hamley Road. It was done kind of in two parts, on the fourth of July, and then there's additional lots in September. As per the agreement, the city has a title on the property, the construction started at which time it will be transferred. Construction title been completed on seven. The only remaining lots are a lot even nine block two, Plan three, four, nine, three, two, which are thirty-six and thirty-two, Hamley. All fees related to last year have all been paid in their own outstanding dollars to pay for that. So the last two properties are being developed, and the titles are in the process of being transferred. There is a request from Wayne Landers of Leo's to transfer, instead of transfer the title for both thirty-two and thirty-six, the municipal decorating. He has requested to transfer title to thirty-two, Hamley, his wife's name. This building was being built as their primary residence, according to Florida. I reviewed and have the lawyers review the development agreement. It is silent on whether or not it can be done this way or not. As I understand, there has been passed practices of this being done with other development agreements. The title for thirty-six, Hamley, will still transfer home to Leo's own decorating as per the original agreement. So based on discussions with lawyers, the fact that this has been done previously, I'm looking to have this move forward from committee of the whole to council to pass resolution for.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we tra, if we transferred a property to, to Wayne's wife, as opposed to selling it, is there, does the city gain any money? Monetarily, if it's sold to you, for example, does the city gain from the sale as opposed to a transfer?
Yeah, so the lots are actually already sold. It's really just changing the final name that the lot's going to be in. So the way the original one was road is they all had to go, the resolution of council said, they all had to go to Leo's own decorating. The request is they're building on it anyhow. They've already paid for it, but can they switch one of them to their own name rather than Leo's? So we just need a resolution for council saying yes. Instead of transferring both under Leo's name, you could transfer it. And what that would do is, instead of two transfers having to happen through the last title branch with the cur fees, it would only be one transfer.
I have another question.
Okay.
Okay, so I agree that Wayne, Wayne has the property, but he also sold the properties for a premium. Right? I bought one of those properties, and I paid a premium for that land, I'm guessing, as opposed to what he's paying for the land.
So the way the development agreements were written originally, they would have paid whatever was agreed with the council. Anything after that, as a private venture, wouldn't it have been any dollars coming out to council? Provision for that development agreement. Alright, thank you.
Councilor Wal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the only question I think I would have is, because the agreement is with the company. So now they want to make auto to, to divide name. Would it be a fee involved of, of something costs the city to make their changes? Otherwise, it's already granted, right? So we don't need to make any changes. It's automatically go to the company. So now the request is go change to the third person. Would you be a cost involved in that part?
I believe they're responsible for the cost of the land transfer title, for the title transfer. So it wouldn't be a cost to us?
Not to us.
Not, not to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Culver.
So he's building the properties, selling them, right?
Yep.
That's what he's doing. So he wants to take one of the properties and keep them sold. That means you'll sell his residence, and I think it was at Lake Indian, right?
He sold his residence last year.
He sold his residence.
So he wants to keep one for his own residence.
Councilor Number?
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, it's he purchased the land to, to build on and sell the property. So if he's going to do one for himself and save us and him, some lawyer's fees, probably transferring it later. So either way, it's going to provide taxes first, once there's a house built on it. If it's their property, then that might speed up when that house is built and all the better for the city. So I'll be in agreeing with, agreeing with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so if I show a hand, who's in favor of this? Opposed? Who waiting, Carrie, to announce?
So we'll be bringing forth the resolution at the next meeting of council.
Next, we're going to Recreation. Seven point one is a memo from the Director of Recreation in regards to refresh from the Knights of Columbus to waive fifty percent of the fees for K R T C. On here.
So twenty twenty-three Knights of Columbus are games are on May the twelfth. It's an annual event that takes place at the T R C C, use the C A as an arena. They're requesting fifty percent of the fees given aid. So their total for the rental of all the spaces is fourteen, one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars eleven cents, with fifty percent to split the fees, that is nineteen oh six. So a memo or letter attached as well from the N S C for the refund.
Thank you. Any questions, Congress? Deputy Mayor Valentino.
Thank you, Mayor Smook. I have a, just a question. I mean, I'm supporting this and the next one because this is part of our policy. But I think my question is, if, if this is our policy to waive fees, or if we have a special event status, if there's already that policy in place, why does this have to come to council for resolutions? Like administratively, can this not already be done and it's a discussion at committee of the whole? That's just my one question on that. And secondly, that I'm supporting these. Thanks.
The policy says that as a director, I can only waive up to a certain amount, and I can't be, I can, I think I'm two hundred and fifty dollars, so I can't waive.
So basically, Deputy Mayor, council would just have to have us redo the policy if you want to grant that or delegate that authority to the, to the administration. It currently isn't designated in that form, which is why you're having so many of these coming from council.
So can I ask, clarify that? So the, because the policy already says that this is the process for groups to waive fifty percent of the fee, correct? But the policy says that the director can only approve two hundred and fifty dollars worth. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I would be in favor of, if the policy already says that this is the process to wait fifty percent of the fees, and I don't know why the director can't just do that, if that's what policy says. Does that make any kind of sense?
My understanding is that council wanted to, to reserve that exclusively to themselves. So council was willing to delegate to the director, the two hundred some dollar waiver. Anything above that, the fifty percent, council wanted to have the final decision. So that's why we're required to bring it to council to have a look at it.
Okay. Thanks for the clarifying. I would, I would look forward to revisiting this to change the policy and just have this as information for council instead of a resolution. But thanks for clarifying for me.
If you're close for a card.
I think you've mentioned it, that we move it forward and get her to.
We would have to have stuck the discussion and change the policy.
Yes, for sure.
So if there's a request from, if there's a consensus from council to bring that policy forward, we could then put it on the next committee of the whole. The council could have a review if you want to change the policy. We just needed indication from you tonight that that's what you'd like to do, and then we'll bring it forward.
If I show a hand, would you like to bring that policy forward?
Madam Mayor, can I speak first?
Okay.
Thank you. I think the policy there for a reason. Sometimes we want to put the director on the spot there to, to answer those questions, so they can just use us to, you know, to make that decision. I think the policy is okay to me, and that we created that policy for a reason. We did discuss about that time. So now if we just walk away, do not discuss about who come forward to ask for the discount, and sometime could be a problem there. So if they come to us, at least we know exactly who's applying for that, and at least we have some discussion whether it's legit or not, whatever reason. So I think it's better off to remain there in my opinion. So, thank you.
I think that's the idea. We have a new council here, so they can hear, they can read the policy over and inform for any discussions that they want. So. Councilor Mayor Hyburn.
Thank you, Madam. Just going back to that, it's where our Sonia is where she's, these are continuing, right? And it's every year and that. So it's not that we're not going to trust her, you know what I mean? It's that it's she'll make the best decisions on behalf of the city. And, and we don't get fees within thousands and thousands of dollars.
So if I show a hand, who wants to bring it forward to next committee of the whole? Opposed? Harry, will we bring it up forward? Next, seven point two is a memo from Director of Community Services in regards to a request from the Nickel Days Committee to waive fifty percent of the rental fees of Mary Ben's be order of. On here.
So we do have an agreement in place currently with the Nickel Days Committee to waive the fees of the T R C C on June twenty-first to the twenty-fourth. However, the rental or the use of any space following up to is not included in that agreement. So they have changed their location this year. They're actually having their meetings at the T R C C, and they're using the Mary, Mary Ben's be boardroom. So they're requesting a discount for the rental of those that they've raised. They're anticipating around twelve. They're anticipating around twelve days, the days do vary, there's about two and a half hours per meeting. So they're looking around um, around the three about thirteen hundred dollars, they're looking for fifty percent discount.
Comments? By show has who's in favor here? Opposed? Carrie, move on. Seven point three, so now the Director of Recreation thing deserves it. Um, in regards to the letter received from your C F P regarding uh to support the upcoming R C F P one fifty, one fifty community block party, Senator?
So say, uh, Council Sandy, we're uh sent me an email requesting um a couple of things, uh, they're celebrating, uh, R C F P is one of the years of policing in Canada on July sixth from one to four o'clock. They're holding the event um around the R C F P area, so they're asking for the vote closure from South Kirk Avenue um to create imports. And they're also asking for the donation of the rented space at the C A Arena uh for the event, should the weather not be warm rate. They did request the G V, but the G V is already booked.
Okay, I'll comment.
Oh, sorry, I was wondering. So I was just reviewing or weaving at these policy, and I'm just, I guess trying to figure out how it aligns with that policy, so I would assume we would consider the R C M P as a non-profit organization?
I don't believe that it was, this scenario was contemplated or not policy was developed. That would be up to uh council's interpretation of their own policy.
Yeah, I guess I would just revert back to the policy, like I think it's awesome that the R C M P wants to bring this event to Thompson, and I would really look forward to seeing it, but um, it doesn't really align, but uh, policy and it would be unfair for us to to waive a hundred percent of the fees when we are doing that for our community groups, but it's just my thought.
Okay, anyone else? Councilor Culver?
So they read this, they're asking us to donate the Gordon beer drink in case of weather. That's what we want, right? They might not have never used it. But they just want us to donate the arena in case it rains or bad weather.
Yeah, that's correct, it's a block party, so the attention's for it to be outside, but if there's inclement weather, they want a backup location.
I'm okay with this, it's not, we waived the fee or nothing, just donate or building in case, thank you.
And Councilor Nonmark?
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna support this going forward, uh, I realize that it's not a non-for-profit, might not fit into that properly, but uh, any kind of uh good public relations we can have with our partners, their C M P. Um, and with our whole community uh safety and well-being strategy in mind. I think uh they they had a an event not too long ago when they had the hockey game with our King Miners. Which was uh well-attended by students and um and I think this is another uh olive branch to everybody to get the people out, and I think it'd be a great idea. Um, I hope it goes well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Culver, do you have your hand up?
I'm just in between the
Uh, Councilor Mark?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have no problem supporting uh this. But maybe we should in exchange, uh, they should wait a couple of quarters to build to us too. With Nico, just us.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you.
Councilor Culver?
By really, there's Gordon beer and book for that day. What is it?
We, what's in the G V? We have a game room set up in the G V, so the game room will be set up at the time of the day. So that's why this this C A will be recently reduced, this C A for
So it's uh. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Who agrees that we should move this ahead? Okay, Carrie. Next is seven point four, memo from Director of Recreation of Community Services in regard to the request received from M P O Grand Chief City requesting special event status for National Indigenous Day uh celebration.
National Indigenous Day, people, National Indigenous People's Day uh taken place on the first, um. This is something that would be too yearly for them, um, it's a special event status which allows the trendy tree owners to be able to sell their goods um for their revenue in a license, it's a like a license for them. Um, and they're also requesting the special event fee of five hundred sixteen dollars to waive, while provided as a donation um for the event.
Thank you. Any comments? Councilor Culver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, so I should have a question about why there's a fee for this special event, but there isn't a fee for a candidate. It's a city, a candidate, it's a fee, it's a Can I add to that?
Yeah.
So just in the spirit of reconciliation, like with the city, I think that in my opinion, the city should want to put their name to this so that we're not charging a fee, but um, yeah, I'm definitely in support of the city.
Thank you. Councilor Culver?
Uh, where is this event though?
Um, there's a
Elaine Burke?
Anything else? Councilor Culver? Deputy Mayor Calhoun?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Smook. Um, yeah, I'm gonna be supporting this, but I also am agreeing with Councilor Overdorff for that, maybe this should just become a city a city event that we own instead of this being an annual event, kind of like what Councilwoman Caver was saying, which kind of goes back to maybe we need to review the policy on some of these things, so I'll be supporting this, thanks.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay. Uh, are you sure, Pat, who's supporting this? Oh, sorry, Sandra, did you have another question?
I just first look at that. I just, uh. I guess I just wanted to add uh that um I think that the city should sponsor, however we have to, um. So that there aren't fees, so that they don't have to request for the fees to be waived. Um, but I think we just might be careful in terms of the language and saying that the city owns the event. Um, I think there's ways we could look at partnering and saying, um. You know, that we're we're sponsoring the event or our name is on the event, but still, um. I guess, just be cautious of our mind, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you sure, Pat, who's supporting this to report? Carrie? Seven point five is an email from Sports Manitoba. Uh, inviting the city of Thompson to bid to host the twenty twenty-six Manitoba Games Administration, and I think.
This is an email that's sent out by Sports Manitoba, which are all municipalities in the province, um, requesting to see if there's any interest in hosting the twenty twenty-six games. City of Thompson recently hosted these, I believe, back in twenty eighteen, which are winter games. Um, this is really brought to information for council, if there's any direction, if this administration should pursue this uh for more information, or if this is dropped at this time.
Councilor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, by two thousand twenty-six, how is our construction going on? Again, are we completed like fifteen percent or seventy-five percent of all the construction that we need to do?
With respect to the pool building or with respect to the roads and all that, I believe that would be the last year of construction, wouldn't it? So there would still be disruptions. Did not work in the summer of twenty-seven? About the summer of twenty-six, that we got a lot of major works from.
The reason I'm asking that because if if we decide to do that, so I want to be sure the town's hopefully not we can go, not the people come to all of here and look at all the equipment and stuff like that, I believe this is someone that, right? Not including that, right?
I'm not sure which season this one is. Like there's sessions coming with additional information. Anyway, thank you.
Councilor Nonmark?
Yeah, as much as I'd love to host the Manitoba Games, uh. I think that putting unreasonable expectations on eighty-eight million dollars plus the pool or the aquatic center. Uh, we'd be pushing things uh for staff, um, administration, um. And or you can make an omelet without breaking a few eggs and look at the way our, some of our streets look right now, and uh, I think that once we're through that, like say after, anytime after twenty twenty-seven. It'd be gung ho. Um, but I I'd still like to look at this and uh and and see when it is and and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Culver?
Uh, pool won't be ready till twenty-six.
Uh, we wouldn't know until council signs an agreement to move ahead of the pool or not.
I agree with Council on, and I don't think we're in a position right now to entertain this. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Smook. So this is a very preliminary, like City Manager said, they send this to all, everybody in the entire province. Um, in the information session that they do is is very preliminary and provides more information, so I would like to see us go to the next step to see um what's all entail and entitled to it, um. And then also see if and where we are at that point with the pool tender and with the timelines for the creation, the completion of that and with the roads, because if it's gonna be, um. Hopefully at the end and everything is done, then this would be a great opportunity to showcase these capital projects that we've just completed. So I think we need to be conscious of the timelines and maybe see if it would work. Um, because the financial benefit to our city to have the opportunity to host this is massive, so I'd just like us to see, to go to the next step with this to see what uh what all entails for us, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Overdorff, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, yeah, I agree with Deputy Mayor Valentino, uh, this has huge economic benefit to our community, um, I was involved in the twenty eighteen uh games when we hosted them here, and um I've seen how much benefit or maybe not, including a lot of our uh recreational facilities, um. So I think that we should explore it further, um, and to see what the commitment is. I think that it is winter games, not summer games, because they just had summer games, uh. The last time that they hope had it Manitoba, I believe, so it should be in winter games potentially, I mean, I'm not concerned. Um, but anyway, yeah, I would be curious to find out more, um, and I think that we should support expanding that just because of the economic benefit that it would have for our communities, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor to the front.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, I, like, uh. Sandra said, I also worked to be at last winter games. Uh, I drove the entire, the entire time every day. Three hours a day, and I got to talk to a lot of the athletes, and they were uh very uh uh very surprised with the facilities that we had here for the winter games, they were uh uh quite appreciative of what we showed, and uh, you're right, it does benefit the city a lot, so if it's winter games, then I think we're we should line ourselves up or if possible.
Thank you. Anything else, anything else made ministry?
So just like to know if there's a consensus for us to move forward and invest the time in this, bring back more information, or if there is no consensus, then we wouldn't be investing nutrition time in this.
If I show a hat, can we have consensus uh who wants to move ahead to the next step? Opposed? It's Carrie. Okay, thank you. Next is uh legislative. Eight point one is a letter from Minister Municipal Relations regarding the twenty twenty-three um urban hometown green team program, and it's on this.
Yeah, this is the letter from Minister Smith indicating that the city is a recipient this year, twenty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to allow us to hire uh summer students under the Green Team Program. I believe that would cover up to fifteen students if we're able to hire them, so uh for information.
Here's what I found.
Thank you, any comments? Questions? Thank you. Uh, do you need any kind of support from us, or it's just fine?
No, the dollars are coming to us, it's for information.
Thank you. Eight point two is a letter from Ditches Ways of Forestry Management Corporation regarding the twenty-year forest management plan on F M L two and forest management license agreement extension.
This is another letter just for information for council, from the organization in the Paw, discussing their forestry plans um in the area, upon review, there's virtually no work in this area, most of it is in the Paw area. So for information for council.
Okay, any questions, uh, Councilor Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, uh, are these not the people that are uh cutting trees out by Saskia Rapids as you speak?
Uh, that's not what was in the report, so if they are, that would be, there are lots of trees coming out here last month. All's I have is the information presented to council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councilor, just to clarify, um, is that this situation, it's not, just so that they don't come back, is the, the, the power we know, the problem?
When you in the beginning?
You did.
This is twice.
Okay.
That is one.
Well, I do believe this was part of when we had, uh. When we had the other discussions with about forestry management from uh the Paw group. I think that could be their their area. But if you want me to find out, we'll clarify who's who's cut it by Saskia. Eight point three, the letter from citizens for protecting our northern waterways ethic.
Again, this is information for council, this is interesting to come to council, this organization is sharing information on aquatic invasive species and the work they're doing to prevent the movement of zebra mussels, so information for council.
Yeah, any questions on that? Eight point four is a letter from the School District Ministry eight uh regarding the Thompson Festival of the Arts.
You know, this is a letter for information as well from the uh School District Ministry League, and a follow-up to the joint meeting of School District and uh City Council regarding the Thompson Festival of the Arts, um, that they are now hosting this uh event.
Any comments? Uh, Deputy Mayor Valentino?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Smook, I just wanted to say that that joint meeting was um good, and this is the benefits of doing it, that we can work together to make things work if we need to, so I appreciate the efforts of all of us that uh that we are there and that we meet with them and that we have a good partnership with them, so thank you.
Thank you. Eight point five is ICIP stacking update for Canada Community Building Fund.
Um, this is a letter from the Province of Manitoba with respect to the uh I C I P program. There have now got the formal paperwork that allows the municipalities that have ICIP to use what used to be called gas tax, it's now called the Canada Community Building Funds for stacking in the future, um, it doesn't mean that it has to be used, and it's not to be used until the end of the program. Um, but I would recommend that council bring forward, once the final agreements are ready, um, resolution Um, resolutions allowing us to sign them, giving you flexibility in the future to use gas tax or Canada Community Building Funds. For matching or not, it just really opens your options.
Thank you. Please. Comments? Councilor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Besides using the, uh, gas tax for matching. Can we use, uh, deserve to do matching as well?
Yep, that's already allowed in in.
Okay.
Yeah.
So just keep us an extra flexibility in case we show up casual, this we get touch.
Yes, and they're they're saying their preference is to save that till the end. Um, of the projects, not doing it right now.
Okay. I want to back to.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So council's in agreement that I'd like to bring resolutions once the agreements are ready from the province.
Can this play a show of hands to bring this forward to the council meeting? Carrie, thank you. Uh, next we have a Merrill. Uh, proclamation from, so from the office of the mayor. Whereas it is imperative that communities across Canada be reminded of the importance of sun safety. And whereas overexposure to U V radiation is one of the major causes of melanoma and non-melanoma skin cancers. And whereas skin cancer is the most common of all cancers, one in six Canadians born in the nineteen nineties will get skin cancer in their life. And whereas many people may seek sun without taking advisable precautionary measures. And are unaware that any darkening or skin color, including a pan, is indicative of U V damage. And whereas skin self-examination should be performed on a monthly basis because the skin cancers are highly treatable when detected early. And whereas say your skin foundation is dedicated to the fight against non-melanoma skin cancers. Melanoma and ocular melanoma through nationwide education and advocacy and awareness. Initiatives. Now therefore, by the virtue of the authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Thompson, the month of May twenty twenty-three. Will be hereby proclaimed melanoma and skin cancer awareness month in the city of Thompson. Thank you for being this. This will be, uh, on the radio station and will be proclaimed. So, uh, definitely, uh, counters that. Um, one thing I've noticed today, and I just wanted to, uh, make, uh, note of is that, uh, spring cleanup. We've had the community, actually, there's a focus on Facebook where they want to get involved and do the spring cleanup. It was a very. Positive post today on Facebook. It was great to see. I think they've even gone as far as. And it might be a bit late in the process, but they've gone as far as reaching out, uh, to the rec center to see. How communities and moves work, whether it works for this year or another year. I think the fact that we get everybody on board is that. And I'd like to a special shout out to Darlene Rockwell, uh, in years past, she's taken bags of, of, of garbage and. And, uh, down in our own town. And I've just had a request from her that I will pick up with her six bag she picked by Boston Pizza today. So. Basically, uh, spring cleanup has unofficially come to a start today. So thank you, Darlene and group. And we'll look forward to what the city i- is bringing out the next week or so. So with that, I'd like to call for adjournment. Councilor Coburn, Councilor Fitzpatrick, all in favor?